Oh, times. A call to order the Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 Town Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:32. Clerk and Councillor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have everyone in attendance. That's Councillors Bordelon, Franco, Whiskey, Jacome, Jones, McBride, Parker, Westervelt, and yourself, Melendez.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to move to suspend the rules of procedure to govern the 33rd Town Council by adding three items to the agenda under recognitions, awards, and memorials, including a proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a proclamation recognizing Hispanic sorry, Hispanic Heritage Month, and a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I so moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so we will begin with Domestic Awareness Month. Councillor Parker.
A proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas one in every four women and nearly one in 10 men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime. And whereas the victims should be provided support services, compassion, and the healing they need during this time in domestic abuses, should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas the town of Groton recognizes the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, and whereas the President of the United States and Congress, as well as other federal agencies, have expressed a commitment to eliminating domestic violence, both nationally and internationally, now therefore be it resolved that the town, that the Groton Town Council proclaims October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers, and urges all citizens to actively participate in any scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Safe Futures, Women's Center of Southeastern Connecticut, the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and other organizations to work toward the elimination of partner abuse, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this third day of October. Signed by Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. Proclamation Recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank Betsy for preparing it beforehand. Proclamation Recognizing National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer awareness months began, sorry, been running around, in 1985 as a partnership between the American Cancer Society and the Pharmaceutical Division of the Imperial Chemical Industries, Betty Ford helped kick off the week-long event, and she was herself a survivor of breast cancer. She was diagnosed when her husband Gerald Ford was President of the United States and brought even more attention to the breast cancer. And whereas through research, the growing knowledge about breast cancer has led to new therapies and targeted treatments that improved outcomes for many people. It is research that brings hope to people facing this disease, especially those living with metastatic breast cancer. And whereas the progress may be in jeopardy, during the COVID-19 pandemic, many people delayed their regular breast cancer screenings. The pandemic disrupted treatment and research. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic also highlighted the inequalities in breast cancer treatment for under-resourced communities across the country, as well as the inequality in treatment between Black and white people. Black women in the U.S. are about 40% more likely to die from breast cancer than white women. Knowing many, knowing what may contribute to breast cancer, symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment are important parts of prevention. And whereas having affordable access to screenings and early detection for all women is an essential component in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas during the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with the mothers, daughters, sisters, aunts, friends, and we recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as the advocates, the researchers, and the healthcare providers who care and the hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas by educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life of all Americans affected by breast cancer and, one day, defeat the terrible disease. Now there be it resolved that the town of, that the Groton Town Council, sorry, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urges fellow citizens to become aware of the impact of breast cancer has on our community and to support the fight against breast cancer so that we may someday defeat the terrible disease. Signed, our Town Mayor Juan Melendez.
Thank you. Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month.
Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas September 15th is the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Mexico all gained independence from Spain on September 15th, 1821, and Chile achieved independence on September 18th, 1810. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan passed a law designated September 15th through October 15th of each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities, and religious traditions, which has had a profound influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work. And whereas the town of Groton recognizes and honors contributions of all Hispanic members of our community and celebrates the culture and traditions of Spanish-speaking residents who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the Groton Town Council invites all members of the community to celebrate 2023 Hispanic Heritage Month with a theme of Latinos driving prosperity, power, and progress in America. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby proclaims September 15th to October 15th, 2023 to be Hispanic Heritage Month. Signed, Juan A. Melendez Jr., Mayor of Town of Groton.
Thank you. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-ct.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. I just have one person on the list, Mary Ellen Furlong.
There we go. Good evening. I am Mary Ellen Furlong of 57 Fishtown Lane, Noank, Mystic in Groton. I was very happy to hear that Groton was getting several educational grants to help our schools and our pupils. There is quite a bit of money available at state and federal levels, and it is good to know that Groton applied for grants. However, I feel that our planning and development staff are putting projects forward for grants, are not putting forward projects for grants. Instead, they're seeming to propose that we use TIF funding, which, rather than the state and federal money that is available, this basically will result in tax increases for residents in the TIF area. Do we need TIF, given the federal funding available since the beginning of 2023? That amounts to $236 million from the Federal Omnibus Appropriations Bill for the state of Connecticut, announced by Senators Murphy and Blumenthal, December 22nd, 2022. If you have driven to Westerly via Route 1 recently, you will have noticed the new sidewalks running along Route 1 from the Stonington High School to downtown Parketuck, paid for by a combination of state and local money. Federal money was used, 1.9 million grant to join Stonington and Westerly's water systems, and $900,000 federal money to upgrade the town dock in Stonington. Groton could have used similar grant requests for a recreation center with swimming pools, an upgraded town center, and a town green. We need sidewalks on Route 1, on Fort Hill northbound, and on Route 184, Flanders Road, in other areas in Groton with sidewalks to nowhere. Here are a few of the grant requests of other towns that may have made for federal and state money. Let's see. New London receives $17 million Transit Infrastructure Grant. Okay? That the funding for this project was authorized by the bipartisan infrastructure law. There's a lot of infrastructure money out there. Let's see. $5 million for construction to realign the Lafayette Circle in Bridgeport. Now, if we wanted a long time ago to realign the center of downtown Groton and make it a proper four-way intersection, we never did. $3.4 million for designing construction of a multi-use path sidewalk and three pedestrian bridges in Oxford. $2.2 million for the city of New London to support ongoing construction of a community and recreation center that will have swimming pools. $2 million for the Habitat for Humanity Affordable Housing. $420,000 for the Waterbury Housing Authority to complete the demolition of blighted structures and work toward constructing affordable housing in that area. $4.5 million for the Hall Neighborhood House to construct a new wing in Bridgeport. $3 million for the City of Bridgeport Water Pollution Control and for the design of the Westside Wastewater. $2.5 million for the Metropolitan Water District, et cetera. I think you get the idea. The TVCCA did succeed, congratulations, in getting the $3 million for improving childcare here. That was good. Even little Noank Fire Department got over a million for upgrading the water systems.
Thank you.
Don't you think the town staff should come up with some of these? Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Burt, is there anyone online?
No.
No? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, so with that, we'll close receipt of citizens' petitions. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. So I'll make a motion to move the September 5th, 2023 minutes and the special trust fund contributions from September. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto communication and reports. Councillor Gajaski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received communication regarding the Groton Sale Foundation and how to purchase papers. I referred them to the Groton Sale Foundation's website, and the community seems very excited about this project, so it was good to hear. I also received communications regarding the sewage in Noank and the effect it has on the businesses here. Thank you to the Town Manager and Public Works for their constant updates and communications. And then the Mystic Fire Department will be having an open house on Monday, October 23rd, at 6:30 PM. That firehouse is located at 52 New London Road.
Thank you, Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received the same communications regarding the sewage. I did, someone reached out to me about Willow Point, which will be a topic for later on down the road. I attended the retirement party for Deb Monahan. I wanted to wish her congratulations, as well as congratulations to Josh Kelly, who will be the new CEO of TVCCA. Electric bills, if you guys need assistance with your electric or anything, applications are now open for the winter season through TVCCA. Five days in, they opened the application process on September 1st. They had 371 people apply within five days. So if you know anyone who needs assistance, please direct them to TVCCA. I did attend a Groton mural. It's nice to see that. It was a lot well-attended. And heartfelt congratulations to our mayor and Mrs. Melendez on your wedding rituals.
Thank you. Councillor Franco.
Thank you. I had numerous communications with residents within the community. I don't have much to report this week, other than coming up, October 14th will be Chili Fest at Thrive 55, as well as Chili Festival down in Mystic, put on by the Mystic Chamber, both on October 14th. One will be, the Mystic one will be mostly all day, and Chili Fest at the Senior Center, I believe, is from 5:00 to 7:00. Thank you. Oh, 4:00 to 6:00?
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, excuse me.
Thank you.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the same communications as other councillors. I also attended the Trails Coordinating Task Force meeting, and I think I had mentioned this before, but it is getting closer to actually happening. We are the, Groton is the beta tester for a Braille Trail Accessibility Trail app that people who are visually impaired can put on their phones and can use to hike on trails. It will tell them left, right, up, down, what to go, what's going to happen. And it's called Soundscape Community. It's a navigation app that can be downloaded on your phone, and they're going to be taking that app and running it around on the different trails in Groton. And people who are visually impaired will be able to use that. So that's kind of exciting for us. The Parks and Rec will be holding the Luminary Walk this Saturday, October 7th, 7:00 to 9:00. It'll be at the Cop Family Park on 184. This year's theme is Woodland Friends, and the rain date is the following week. And I also just like to give a compliment, I don't think there's anybody here from Parks and Rec, but I walk regularly at the Paquonic Plains Park. And just a compliment to our staff who keeps that park in tip-top shape. It is absolutely beautiful, and I walk there quite a bit, and they do a fantastic job with the field. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out. That's, I think they're just, they're doing just a great job.
Councillor McBride.
Thank you. Not a tremendous amount of correspondence since last week's meeting. Did receive the same communication as other councillors. Did also want to note that I did make a referral to the council regarding reviewing the potential for a grant position within the administration to help review, apply, and administer grant management. That referral was approved, I guess, or motion also by Councillor Franco and Councillor Gajaski. So that will hopefully be coming to this council at some point in the future if the council deems appropriate. I'm also, will be, will be working on a referral for the establishment of a joint-use facility agreement between the Board of Ed and the Recreation Department. And the main goal is to optimize the use of all of the fields that we have, to increase the utilization, and make sure we're sharing them properly throughout the towns, throughout the town. That'll be submitted to the council for review and consideration over the next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelon.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Town Manager for the cleanup at Pleasant Valley School. Some constituents did reach out to me. I was not aware that robotics still uses that building, so some of the family was concerned. And hopefully that building can stay safely managed between the school and the town, because there are people still utilizing that structure as we speak. So thank you for the cleanup there. I received concerns about abandoned buildings that are not currently being utilized and their maintenance on the exterior, so just hoping to keep up with that. Also had a lot of reach-out and correspondence regarding the Noank Cell Tower concerns, as well as some communications regarding the Proprietary Use Committee document, concerns with taxes, and a few compliments regarding the AED machines and the presence of those. I know the Groton Youth Football Team did post that they have that now down at the field, so thanks to the town staff for initiating and putting that up. I too attended the mural in Groton at Outer Light. It was heavily attended. It's a great, you know, if you haven't seen it yet, it's a great window when you're coming off the highway, entering the city. And I am proud to call Jacob Cothers my cousin, who is an artist, and I look forward to seeing more artwork and more history-based items that could help beautify our town. It's exactly what was needed, so. As it was stated, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm very open. I am a stage-three breast cancer survivor, and I really, you know, breast cancer awareness should be every month, not just October. And there's a large number of cancer survivors and people being diagnosed daily in Lennon County. We have some of the highest rates out here. And it's not exclusive to women. Men can get breast cancer. So that's just, you know, just something to really keep in mind. Also, the Fitch Music Boosters marching band, they were doing their annual fundraiser October 21st. I've been attending for many years now, and it's their largest fundraiser. If you love music, by coming out and just buying a ticket helps support the music program. If you want to volunteer your time, contact the Fitch Music Boosters. Come out, help with the concessions, Dan, maybe help with parking. Again, they host about 10 to 15 different schools, and to do that, it's a huge lift. So anybody that's interested, please contact the school for more information. Thank you.
Councillor Westervelt.
Thank you very much. I received much the same communications that all the other councillors did. I want to thank the Town Manager for giving me the information for the Uwe Steely School. I was able to pass along some of that information and have more information to gather. So thank you for that. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Councillor Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar emails. Yesterday, I did attend the Parks and Recreation Master Plan presentation. And yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the mayor as well, and for Mr. and Mrs. Melendez, the newly, Mr. and Mrs. Melendez, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so over the weekend, I married my best friend, and we had a great celebration at the Branford House at Yukon Avery Point, which is where we met. So I couldn't be more happy, and just thank you for everybody, for the well wishes.
Onto Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The next representative town meeting, full body, is October 11th. They meet at Thrive 55 Living Center, formerly known as the Senior Center, and they meet at 7:00 PM. And there is a vacancy still in 7th District. That's a Democratic vacancy, so it has to be filled with a Democrat. So any Democrat from the 7th voting district is interested, please contact my office. The RTM Finance Committee, I believe, will be fielding and reviewing some, a few referrals that are coming from the council. I know they have one from the last meeting that they are meeting on tomorrow, actually. No, wait, excuse me, Thursday. Thursday, the 7th.
Okay. Clerk of the Council.
Town Council, a report for you is, well, we're gearing up for a municipal election. That's November 7th of this year, and that, so there'll be Town Council, Board of Ed, and Representative and Representative Town Meeting. All of those seats are up, there's not five seats, excuse me, six seats for the council, no, five, well, five regular seats and one two-year vacancy seat for the Board of Ed. Nine seats for council, and 41 seats for the RTM. The ballots will be available for absentee this Friday, so at my office, that's the 6th. There is an online application that you may use, if you're comfortable doing that. I've received one so far this year, so. That's available through the Secretary of the State's website. It is very easy to get to, it's right on, as soon as you go to her website, it's at the front page, can't miss it. And so that, you can also request one from my office, call us, email us, come in and vote. We'll keep your ballots safe until Election Day, and then we'll hand them off to the registrar for their ballot clerk to run for the vote, you know, to the optical machines. So, right now, I did put today on our town website, if you're so inclined to go on the web and look at the, these are proof ballots, but it is what, exactly what they're going to look like, so it wouldn't look any different, so I put them up. So it's all of them on the Town Clerk's section of the town website, so that's www.groton-ct.gov, and you look under Department, you'll see Town Clerk and Elections, probably right in there, and all the information you need. The registrar's office is open on Tuesdays from 5 to 7, and Thursday and Friday from 8:30 to 4 every week. You can also, if you're not registered to vote, you can register to vote in my office also, the Town Clerk's office. Let's see, the ballot are bilingual, for those of you who like to only speak Spanish, so. That's, that was put into place a few years back, and we've maintained that status, even though we're not required. It's based on population, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Absentee ballots are being mailed out for the college students, you said Friday, or is that later on down the road?
If they apply for them, we'll mail it to them. There's no automatic ballot.
No, no, I got hers in, I was just asking so I can give her a heads-up.
Oh, yeah. We don't get the ballot until, I hope I get it, that's just what the statute says, 31 days before the election, we're supposed to mail them, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Everything I have on file, I've got about 25 applications that, through the year, we've collected.
Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Clerk. Up to what date can people register to vote for the election?
A week before the election, for new, for new registrations. Now, saying that, there is a provision in state law that if you find yourself on Election Day not registered to vote, let's just say you think you are, and you go to your voting poll, and they say you're not, well, that, you're in a pickle, right? Not so. It's been about five years. You could go to the Voter Registrations, Election Day Registration Office, which will be at the registrar's office at the community center, it's in the front section, though, not in the back, where you go to play pickleball. It's in the front, up the stairs and two doors on the right. And so, Election Day registration is just that, you register that day, and they actually will give you a ballot to vote that day also, and they have one for every district, so it's good, all seven ballots. So, don't wait to vote. There's no requirement to be in a specific party, this is not a primary, this is an open election, any party can vote for any person. Unaffiliated can vote for any person, you know, it's the same thing. But we do have primaries next spring, first Tuesday in April.
Councilor Franco?
Thank you. So, when you're out talking to people who may be housebound, and they're asking about the absentee ballots, they're asking how they can get them, and I've suggested that they call you, is that the best route? Can they just call, or?
Absolutely. So if they call, we'll, we'll send an application. We cannot just issue a ballot, we have to have an application on file. But there's also, you speak of somebody who, housebound, so they cannot get out.
Right.
There is a permanent absentee ballot status that is offered through the state and through our office. That requires a note from your physician, not on a prescription pad, an actual letterhead stating the fact that you are unable to go to a polling place, physically go to a polling place, and so you'd be, there's a statute that I send this information. So if someone tells me that they're housebound, I will send them an application, and then the instructions to call their doctor, you know, have their doctor help, because I need both the application and the doctor's note. We work through it, we work through it. But that, what that'll do is, if once you, once you qualify for that status, every time there's an opportunity for you to vote, you'll, I'll send you a ballot without you applying. It's quite convenient, quite convenient. So, if you're a party member, that means primaries, automatically send a ballot, not the application, so it's just great. There's a small cravat, of course, every February, and a letter is sent out by the registrars to make sure that you are still qualified. So if nothing's changed, and you didn't get, you're still immobile, then you reply back, yes, everything's the same. The problem is people don't reply. It's a confusing letter, and it's, it's too bad, but we never throw anybody off, I always call them. If I get the list from the registrar, and I'm missing somebody from our regular list, I call them.
All right, thank you, but a call, call, call the clerk.
Yep.
Thank you. I will continue to share that information. Thank you.
Councilor Bordalom?
Thank you. Could you just also speak, you know, we are also having a city election, it's uncontested, but it is important to know in District 2 and 3, the ballot will look different than the other districts.
Well, in the city, they'll have their own ballot. It's not a combined ballot, it's a separate ballot. So if you live in Districts 2 and 3, voting districts, when you go in to vote, you'll get two ballots.
I just wanted to make sure.
For absentees, you gotta go the city or the town. I, believe me, I tried to combine them, and it went, phew.
I just want to make sure people are aware, so that it's, you know, Districts 2 and 3 only, and that there is a city election, even though it is uncontested. We spoke about Board of Ed and RTM and Town Council, but we didn't talk about the city, which is also important, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the, off the homebound thing, the individual can also, I believe, pull up to the polling location and request for them to come to the vehicles, is that correct?
Sure. We, they could come to do an absentee ballot that way also, but you can ask, you absolutely, somebody has to go with you, that can go into the polling place and the moderator, and see the moderator of that polling district. I'm telling you information that's not my business, this is registrar's business, but I do happen to know it, some of it. So you can, you can go to the voting polling place where you normally would vote, send someone in and say, I have a person in the car who's, who can't come out to the car, and they need to vote. So then they'll send an official with a ballot, and they, and they vote that way. But it has to be an official, it can't be just, you know, your brother can't go and get a ballot for you. It has to be an election official.
Town Manager?
Good evening.
Could I add just one more thing? Because I know that's in the news about Bridgeport, and they're stuffing the ballots into the ballot box. We, we do have a ballot box outside of the town hall, it's only for absentee ballots. When you, or if you vote absentee and you get a ballot, you'll notice on the mailing envelope on the back that it'll have a sticker with your information on it, and at the bottom there's a little box with, you know, for information. That is for someone who you've requested for them to return your ballot. By law, you, if you vote by absentee, you have to bring your ballot back, unless you designate a person, it has to be a relative, or, you know, or designate a healthcare worker, just your buddy can't do it. So, your spouse, or your brother, you know, a family member, or a healthcare provider can do it, but not just anyone. It's very, very strict. It's protected, it's, you can put it in the mail, the mail's, it's safe, or you come to that ballot box and put it in, not someone else.
May I, just very quickly, from what I've read on that, one of the solutions that they're trying to find in Bridgeport is for cameras at the box. Do we have a camera focused on our box?
I believe we, I know it's been talked about, I know I didn't put a camera on the box.
Is there a camera on the box?
I think there is, but I think it's poor quality, I know there's some talk of upgrading our systems. I'll double-check, though, and I'll let the council know.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't like, I wish we'd get rid of them, maybe when you talk to your legislature, tell them to get rid of it, it's just, it's a nuisance.
I think there, I think there's one coming out of one of the finance, just through a finance department window, you know, just because we tell people not to put checks in there, but they do sometimes.
Yeah, we have a green box in front of town hall, it's just Town Clerk and cravat only.
Hopefully it catches.
People will put things in there. They shouldn't.
I'll find out.
Town Manager?
Good evening again. Had a, some of the department heads and I had a great meeting with Superintendent Austin yesterday, and some of her staff, we're hoping to make it a regular meeting. Colonel Legerd School, Bill Belloc, Bell Site closed about two weeks ago on the Colonel Legerd School. They have some wrap-up through the city process, but that's going well. Data Center lawsuit, the insurance company attorney did get back to me, they will be participating in the October 24th COW to give an update. They did say they're planning on filing a, something, a motion is dismissed, they said there's a strong case to get it dismissed, so, but that's, they're tied up in another court, in actual, in court right now, so I'll get more soon. Let's see, the town is being allocated a little over $75,000 for an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Planning Department is sort of heading that, but we're looking at maybe a couple fleet vehicles, maybe an EV charging station for town vehicles, electric vehicles. We were notified last week on the Nature Everywhere Program that the partnership between the schools, Groton Public Schools, Groton Parks and Rec, Planning Department, and GOSA were successful and being chosen as a cross-organizational team selected through a competitive process. The program's a two-year process through which the team will create a plan to ensure all children in Groton have equitable access to outdoor space and nature-based experiences. Focus areas of the plan will be healthy food access and climate resilience, and the, some of the key team members will be going to training in November on that, so that's good news. Knowing sewer had been occupying a whole lot of time the last two months or so, I do want to thank Jen Maggio at Ledgelight for helping pull people together. As of right now, things are looking good. We've ran through all tests, we know that we can do, the numbers have been looking good, we believe it was a summer issue, potentially an individual vote, we don't know, but it's been going well on testing. If all goes well, the rain set us back, rain kind of affects the testing. If all goes well, the remaining test, they'll be back harvesting mid-October, around the 15th or so. So, that's just now waiting for the testing to come back, but the tests have looked great recently, so. Public Works, the new windows are pretty much done going in at the library. The new CCTV system at the community center is supposed to be installed by the end of this week. For those big-belly solar trash compactors, Greg is going out tomorrow with some of the public work staff to determine exactly where the compactors will go, it'll be installed in the next few days, there's three of them. And then, speaking of the Noink Tower, we're in negotiations with that tower company to put it at the police station instead of down in Noink. It's looking promising, so I should have something for the council soon. So, should be good news for Noink, hopefully, and it looks like it'd be a good deal for us, too, it'll be a win-win, so. And, Counselor McBride did get the second support for the manager position, so that will come on the agenda in the future. And just quick mention about one of the planning department grants, and obviously we're not doing a good job of advertising things. We do have the 6.4 million Community Challenge Grant, which includes housing at the Housing Authority, as well as a lot of other things. There's another $2 million on the table, maybe, maybe low interest loans to the developed, to the private portion of that, so we're still figuring that out, but they did a great job in that, and that's a very big grant. I will put our planning staff against any other planning staff anywhere. And they also have, we of course had that recent $200,000 Resilience Plan Grant in the Planning Department, and then, and by the way, I've not heard of any TIF discussions lately, I don't believe there's anything going on with TIF right now, but I'll double-check with John Page.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. Did we also get funding for the bridges, like the, what is it, the Quaker Farm Bridge, Quaker Hill Bridge, whatever?
Yeah.
There were some bridges there as well, that we had funding for, I believe, as well?
Yeah, I think we had the final funding for that. I can get you up to you on that, that's been a little bit, since I looked at it.
Also, a resident was, had concerns, he was stating that the heating assistance this year, I believe he stated that they were going to be giving out $350 this year for heating assistance, and he was concerned, he thinks it's lower this year than it was in previous years. And previously talking to you, you said there might be additional funding as well, can you, can you give me just a brief synopsis?
And you know, did they talk to, of course, TVCCA has some funding, we have some Groton Utilities funding for it, we've got, of course, ARPA dollars, so there's several different pots, so I'm not sure who they spoke with, but if you want to refer them to me or to Marge Finjulis, I'm sure we can figure it out.
Yeah, well, I gave.
Or give me the information, I'll get back with you, or whatever.
Right, correct. All right, thank you, I just, I wanted to make sure that there was additional funding from what I was told previously, to confirm that. Thank you.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Just a question, Town Manager. Has there been any research done on the, on the legal review of the 2021 Property Reuse Document? I know it's come up, but I'm not sure if it was actually requested upon to have that review, but there was some concerns in speaking to citizens that there are some legal matters in the 2021 that are also in the 2023, and I just want to make sure that that has been covered.
Rich Cody has on his list to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Mr. Burke, didn't, on terms of the Groton Long Point Bridge, that is now being paid for by the federal government, if my current state government?
Federal, yes.
Federal, federal government, so in effect, it's as if we did get a grant for that entire bridge, it's just, we don't get the money ourselves, but they're paying for the whole thing.
Correct, now, we may have a little bit on the utility work, if we want to bury the utilities, rather than leave them above ground, but outside of that, yes, it's covered.
So that's a, that's a pretty substantial amount of money that.
Yeah, it's around, what, $7 million?
Seven, eight million dollars that we got, so.
Councilor Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Town Manager Burke, just seeing the superintendent here, just, was there an update on the camera system and all that, the link that they had, has there been?
The mutual link?
Yeah.
We just discussed yesterday, they have the wiring, they have the wiring in, the cameras in, I think there are negotiations for the software package itself, so they're working their way through it.
Thank you. Councilor Bordalom?
Thank you. Any more updates on the AED machines? I know you said there was a little bit of a problem with the one going in, is everything?
Everything's done and installed, it's all done.
How many total did we install?
I think six, I believe. We had some, of course, previously, but we added six more. We had four more indoor, two of them are out the outdoor, kind with the cabinets that automatically alert the police when staff, because staff's not around it all the time, and then four indoor ones.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate that initiative that was brought forward, that I brought forward, and, you know, you guys are taking it and moving it along. I think it's going to be an asset to the community. The cell tower, possible change in location, will there be any discussions about that before it's finalized, so that the community's aware, because there are people who live in that area, too?
The community is aware, but, yeah.
And I just want to make sure that there's some community outreach to that area as well, and some information about where, where it would go, you know, exactly how tall it will be, and the, what that would do to the skyline in that particular area, so more information about that would be.
Well, again, it'll actually probably just replace the tower at the PD in replacement, so it's not going to really have much effect that way. But there was originally, on last Monday, going to be a Siding Council meeting to get public input on the original location, that was canceled, and Louisville was developing wanting to look at the Police Department, and I noticed it went out to all the interested parties that they are looking at the Police Department.
And is there any type of, a resident actually asked me, what is the exact company that's putting the cell tower there?
There's a couple different companies involved, I'm, give me a second, I have it.
It seemed to be unclear on who it was.
Because you have a couple companies that want to put things, place things on a tower, you have the actual one that is looking to build it. Give me a second.
And then the other question is, if it goes to the Police Department, is there any type of rental fee that we, we get, or does it just the access, or what's the benefit, I mean, obviously gets it out of Noink, which is a great.
It'll be a good deal for us, we're going to go. It'll be a good deal for us. We're negotiating it now.
I'm sorry?
There will be. It'll be a good deal for us. We're negotiating it now. I can't talk about the negotiations in public, but yes, it's, it's going to be a good deal.
Well, I guess, I mean, I was not even aware that there would be a possible kickback at all, so that's, I was just thinking when we would bring that on.
It looks like the main company we're dealing with is ARX Wireless.
So, then we negotiate a rental fee, like a relocation, if we get kicked?
We go through our purchasing department to, yeah, to our purchasing agent. Yes, we've been negotiating, as we do with, we've done that with other sites.
And then that will come to the council at some point?
Yes.
Is that already on the agenda for a certain date yet or not?
We have finished negotiations, so not yet. But it's a huge win for Doak, I can't, and a huge win for us.
No, it's great.
Yeah.
Oh, and then, regarding No Ink, I know that the, the water's tested frequently. Is there any, I guess some people are asking, is there any way to, you know, maybe be more proactive in the summer so that we don't have such a big shutdown period? Is there anything you can implement with the shellfish and support as a town to maybe increase testing around the summertime so that we can catch it at an earlier time?
Now, the official ones, the only ones that really count are the ones done by Doak, by the Department of Agriculture. They're the ones that shut them down and have the lead on it. And of course, Grotton Shellfish, Jim Markow, he does his own private testing. It doesn't count, but it gives you an idea of what's going on, and he does that regularly. Ledger Lite did a little bit. They do beach testing, of course, and they, they help out a bit. They're going to be testing extra, even through the winter. They're going to be testing ongoing, doing extra testing and keeping a close eye on it, especially going into next summer.
Thank you for all your efforts with that.
Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to confirm, Mr. Burke, we already have some towers on our police department building, right?
Yes, and we, I don't want to go too much into it, but we maintain the current ones, and they're not in great shape. This would replace that, and we would no longer be responsible for maintenance along with some other benefits.
So, the, because I know.
If it all works out.
It was in the, within the budget that we would see it when we go through the budget process, because it's a, they're renting, basically, I believe there was a couple of cellphone companies.
Yes.
That use it.
We'll get some rent off it, yes.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to make sure people know that it's already being in use.
Okay. Onto committee reports, from the committee as a whole, you all might be happy to hear, we don't really have anything for next week, so we're looking to cancel that COW. Get a week off. That's the tenth. That's the tenth, so yeah.
Personnel and appointments, Chair Jacob?
No meeting, no report, mayor.
So, we're canceling, I just wanted to make sure I understood, we're canceling next Tuesday?
Correct.
But we have a ton of agenda items that have not even made it on.
Cancel next Tuesday.
And the reason is?
We have nothing for next week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Personnel and appointments, Chair Jacob?
No meeting, no report, mayor.
Rules Chair Parker?
No meeting, no report.
Public Safety Chair Bright?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Onto new business. We will recess. The COW meeting at seven-twenty-one. And open the, a call to order the Tuesday, October third, two thousand twenty-three Special Town Council Committee as a whole to order at seven-twenty-two. All councillors are present. Onto new business, National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
So, this was a grant that Ernie Koschmider had actually gone after. We had met with the Director of Agriculture, and he'd come out to our, one of our sites this summer, was very interested in the program that we have for our children, and then the farm-to-school, or the farm-to-home program that we were giving out fresh vegetables. And he was telling us about this particular grant. So, Ernie Koschmider caught wind of it, and he has moved his, his offices have moved from Fitch High School to Mary Morrison, and he has a full kitchen. And we got back an office that was made for an assistant principal, so now Assistant Principal Carmita Hodge has her own office at Fitch, and Ernie's very thrilled to have that space. Because he will produce, with this new equipment, he'll be able to produce a lot of the fresh fruits and vegetables that we get from the farms in the fall, and he'll be able to process them and freeze them and be able to serve them to our kids in schools all through the year. So, he is very excited about this. We are excited about it. It came to us in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-four. So, that's the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any questions for the superintendent? Councillor Bordelone?
I just want to congratulate, as a person who strongly advocated for free reduced lunch programs in our school system, especially we saw the need during COVID when families were out of work and could not afford lunch. It's really important that we, we have, if we're going to educate, they have to be fed, and they need to be well-fed so that they can sustain, you know, the rigor of the day. So, I'm in all support of any opportunities to bring fresh vegetables and education on, you know, healthy eating, as well as feeding our community in our most vulnerable, which are our children. So, this is exciting for Grotton, and, you know, I know Mr. Koschmider quite well and have, you know, worked with him directly and seen his work through the years. So, this is definitely exciting, good for Grotton, and I look forward to seeing how this, you know, continues and flourishes.
Thank you. He continues to look for every grant and usually is very good at getting it. And Shannon Weigle, of course, I have to do a shout out to her and the team, because she does a marvelous job making sure that we're following all the directions of these grants.
My other question is, is there any other parts of this grant that maybe this can be utilized for within that, that system that you guys are looking to do, or any other things that you wanted to highlight that we should be aware of?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I know that the grant was pretty cohesive for what he wanted to accomplish with the packaging and the, you know, preparing of this fresh fruit and vegetables. And there was no responsibility or obligation to the town, and there were no matching funds. And this is one of the many that he's actually received.
And then my last question is the, you know, Mary Morrison, as they said, is on mothballs or on ice. We're holding it just in case. Should that we have to eventually close Mary Morrison, this equipment can be moved? Do we have a plan to relocate it if we had to at any point, like, so that we can continue the program?
We don't have a plan at this time. We really are considering holding on to Mary Morrison. Space has become an issue, believe it or not, even with new schools. So, we do have ECAT, which is the Early Childhood Program in there now, and Treehouse is in there. So, we are still utilizing that building.
Thank you.
Councillor Franco?
I'd like to thank you very much for getting this grant and for getting it, which will help purchase the freezer and cryovac machine and the food cutter, and I think that's great, because these are things that otherwise you'd have to be paying for out of your budget, so I think this is wonderful. I also like that there's no match requirement, and it's a reimbursement grant. So, thank you very much. I appreciate this.
You're welcome. I'm happy to do it.
All right. So.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll read it. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Grotton Public Schools Board of Education to accept a CSDE National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistant Grant in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, and to refer the item to the RTM.
Second.
Do you want me to read the?
Nope, that's fine. Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordelone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstentions. Careers in AMC nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. Onto the Grotton Public Schools DoDIA MCAS grant?
So, this is our seventh Department of Defense Education Activity Grant since two thousand fourteen, when I got here. The first one was on technology, the second one was on literacy, all of them nearly a million or over a million dollars. We got a math grant. It happened to be number one in the nation of accepted grants, and it was also one-point-two-five-oh million dollar. We've had a STEM grant, a careers grant, and a world language grant. And the number seven is one that we're, we've called Building a Culturally Responsive Community and Strengthening Student Performance in Literacy, Humanities, and STEM. So, what we've really looked at is partnering with our community partners, and I, I know that you realize that we have five intra-district elementary magnets. Our Grotton Middle School was formed from an MSAP grant, which was nearly five million dollars when Cutler and Westside were independent and then came together. And so, they've had these community partners. So, it's like Project O and NESTS. It's Mystic Aquarium and Mystic Seaport and Mystic Center for the Arts. So, all of these partners have a price tag to them, and so to continue being a magnet school and doing enrichment during the day, sending kids out, you know, on field experiences, but also bringing our partners into the school, is really important to us. So, this is a five-year grant that will sustain that. After five years, you know, the partners also come up with grants, so sometimes they'll find matching grants. We've even asked for transportation because of this additional monies that we've had to spend on the new contract for buses. We didn't get the six-to-six. We knew that. It was going to cost us two more million dollars, and I wasn't coming to the town council to ask for that kind of money. But I am going to the partners and asking them for their contribution to help us with transportation, and they actually identified twenty-one trips that they're going to give us in between six-to-six, so I was really happy about that. But this particular grant also looks at student performance, and with the latest legislation around the right to read, we have actually shifted the balance in our K-through-three curriculum. We've rewritten it. We've worked on a U-Fly program, and we have leadership now with a real wonderful educational rock star around the science of reading. And it's a person who has a reading consultancy and has been years in education and is helping us to work through K-through-five. We haven't had leadership in K-five, and so now we do, and it's paid for in the grant for the next five years. Also in STEM, we looked at that for the science and the math, and even the robotics and the engineering piece. Because if all of our elementaries have these different magnet experiences and these partnerships, you're really creating enthusiasm in kids and have, helping them to find what they're really good at and what they love to do in these enrichment opportunities and after-school and in their classes. And then when they go to the middle school, they have Project Lead the Way, and they have a plethora of many enrichment and extracurriculars. And same thing with the high school. So, it's really providing almost a career pathway, starting in elementary, middle, and then high school. So, this grant will only help support that initiative, that vision for our kids, because it's not just colleges, it's college and careers. And so, that's really important, that kids find the kind of courses that they really are engaged in and really grow from. So, we're really hoping to take care of our K-through-five students in those areas and really see measured growth every year from them. COVID, we took a little dip, so did the state, but I really want to get them back up. We doubled our numbers in AP and IB, and we have a success story to tell, looking at the data from Fitch next week at our COW. And we'll, we'll do the middle school the following week, and then the elementaries, looking at our data. But really, I see it as a benchmark, and this is going to help support the work that we're doing and giving the kill, the children the skills that they need to succeed. So, to me, it's a really important grant, and I came up with the title.
So, I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Grotton Public Schools Board of Education to accept a Department of Defense Education Activity Military Connected Academic Support Program grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, it's two hundred and fifty.
It's two fifty here and two forty.
Is it two forty or two fifty?
Two fifty. One million, two hundred and fifty.
One million, two hundred.
Zero obligation from the town.
One million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project period from October first, two thousand twenty-three through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight, and to refer the matter to the representative town meeting. So, move.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent. This is great for the town of Grotton, and thank you for all the effort that you do. I'm just a couple of questions on it. So, this is the seventh grant that we have received. Are all of these grants sort of multi-year grants?
Five years.
Five years. So, so we have, we have four other grants that are continuing on?
Well, they're not all continuing on. Some have really expired, but we still have a few that we're working on.
Okay, so they kind of overlap each other?
They do overlap.
Okay.
But they're very sustainable. When you work with the Department of Defense, you need to actually write in your sustainability plan. So, for instance, if you have staffing in there, or if you have things that you might foresee extending, you have to write about that. A lot of the costs, though, are embedded coaching. I really, each one of the grants has provided amazing coaching for our teachers, and that really is the best bet bang for your buck, because that goes straight to the kids and to their, you know, their growth. So, that and equipment and supplies are in there too.
You do a different grant every year, a different type of grant every year, or some, some different subject matter every year?
Yes.
On the grants. What is the process you use to sort of come up with that subject matter for?
We look at data. We look at where, the areas that our kids need help with in success. We have this vision of this career pathway, K-through-twelve. So, you know, one of the grants that was probably a twenty-twenty-one grant was about career pathways, K-through-twelve. So, we, we look at those opportunities and the things that we've built into that grant. How can we expand that? When we got the World Language Grant, we had had to apply for JROTC, for instance. It's something that was a vision from the beginning, and this community wanted, I wanted it as a submariner's daughter. And when the students stand up for me at graduation to serve our country, there's like thirty to forty kids who stand and deliver, and so I really feel that that's important. So, this year, we rolled out an NNDCC, which is a precursor to JROTC. You, they have to like grandfather one in. They don't make up new JROTC units, and I think there is one becoming available, so if we do achieve, we should be next in line. But I had to submit that we were applying for that in order to get the World Language Grant, so it just gave me the leverage I needed to get that going.
All right, thank you, and thank you for all the effort you do in getting these grants and bringing them into the town of Grotton. Thank you.
Thank you. The two that I didn't have to come to you about, because they were ARP, so they were actually grant-funded that, you know, are indicated for districts, was the Mental Health Specialist, and it made the news. And so, we have another social worker for early childhood, which I'm really thrilled about, and a summer mental health grant, and dual credit is coming. So, we do, I'm actually putting together a table, and I'll send it out in my weekly updates. I hope you're enjoying them. They're a little, they're a little thick, but I try to get everything that's happening about the schools in there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordelone?
Thank you. I just had a. Ms. Austin? That's all right. I had put my hand up, acknowledged it, but somehow I got overlooked. I apologize. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts as a person who spoke with you very vividly when you first came on board about the, you know, getting some form of an ROTC program here, and looking at ways that we can connect that as a career readiness component. So, my son is the first, you know, year in that program, so he was, you know, be able to be a part of it. I know Mrs. Lambert was back. I know Mrs. Lambert was back at Westside together, we were, you know, working together.
It was his class that created the survey.
Yes.
That went out, and we saw thirty percent of our students were interested.
And so I just wanted to thank you for that. And, you know, two years ago, my other son who graduated from Fitch missed out on it. But we caught it at the end, and I know Mrs. Lambert and I together, you know, constantly advocating, and you heard the message, it came, I remember speaking right there to the board. Looking at this constantly, it's so important that we're able to get access to these funds. These are contingent, though, on the percent of military students we have. Is that the nineteen percent threshold or?
Yes. I'm glad you asked that question, because we're getting ready to send out Impact Aid. Captain Curtin and I are going to do a short video clip, and I said every survey, Impact Aid's survey matters, every family matters, because some families don't even realize that their contributions at work could indicate points for us in Impact Aid. So we're trying to collect every single form, and we are very close to that nineteen, twenty percent margin. And not only does that bring in four million dollars to the town, it's actually, we were looking at that, and John Bird and I saw that it's brought in more than what we had predicted. You know, I think about four million dollars more in the past few years. And then they also, we also, if we have that nineteen-point-five percent military impacted, we also get what we call supplemental Impact Aid, and that's really secured funding for technology in Groton since I've been here, since 2014. And the one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks, I just bought iPads for my littles, you know, for reading, because they have this new reading program that they're doing in intervention. So they do have real books, though, I promise, not just iPads. So, so it's really important, and I've sent out messages to the community, please fill out these forms, and that, and the free and reduced lunch forms, because the more that families fill out the forms, the more likely we are to have more school CEP community eligible and be able to have all children receive free and reduced lunch in Groton.
Yeah, that was just one of the things I noticed, is impact aid forms, which help us qualify. The other thing is, is under the IB and the higher-level classes, this initiative to close those achievement gaps, is there any form in this particular one or one that's coming to help fund more supports in the higher-level classes via your way of tutors and other supports within those upper-level classes?
We've gone for a grant that does provide more tutors at the middle school and high school specifically, especially in the area of math. We also have the National Math and Science Institute that we work closely with. Department of Defense also provides that, it's networking, it's working with our teachers, giving them coursework in AP and IB in the higher level, and also support. We have equal-opportunity schools that we're working with that are collecting data, and I'd be happy to present that, I'll be presenting it to the board around the success story that we have. Our mean is very close to three, which is, you know, we have kids who are, have three-fourths and fives, and we have some kids who haven't gotten there yet. But I think every, we had the best participation rate in AP testing, and I was able to cover it and pay for it through a grant, through Department of Defense. So that's what I like to hear. It's progress, right?
And my last, my last question was, you know, looking at the arts, will this grant help to grow any of the programs like fencing and music programs that feed into the high school, where we're starting to see smaller numbers, because fencing is part of that STEM, and, you know, the music and math are linked. So I just, you know, I know a lot of people were wondering, a lot of schools, when we go to competitions for fencing and marching band, they have a feeder program from the middle school, which only grows us, you know, down, down the pipeline when you get, you know, nine through twelve.
So we do have after-school program, programming through a Twenty-First Century Grant, and we're, we're actually applying for the next level, so it'll carry us for more years. And so there are more after-school opportunities at both the middle school and the high school for all kinds of enrichment. So I can look into that to see what the language is on that.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you for your efforts, and this is a grant that I always look forward to seeing coming in, and it is, you know, very vital, and it offsets a lot of our costs in our town, so.
And I'll send you a more comprehensive table in my next notes for everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just to be clear, I'd, I'd given you the floor. I don't know why you said I didn't call on you. I didn't, I overlooked.
Well, she went away, and I, I didn't know that you had called on Minnesota.
Okay.
Thanks.
Counsel Franco.
Thank you. I, um. Superintendent does not need to come to the podium. I just want to say that I am very happy to always receive DODIA grants and the one-point-two-million dollars, and especially for the literacy, when we had issues after COVID-19 with children falling behind in literacy. So I'm very excited about this and couldn't be more happy to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Parker, seconded by Counsel Jacome. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. We adjourn unanimously at seven forty-three. And the council will be, council meeting will be back from recess at seven forty-three. And we are on to National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Resolution approving the Board of Education's acceptance of a CSDE National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistant Grant. Resolve to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of a Connecticut State Department of Education CSDE National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant in the amount of thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and to refer the matter to the representative town meeting, RTM, per Rule six-point-five-point-three. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalon. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto Groton Public Schools DODIA MCAS grant.
Would you like me to read that, Mayor?
Sure.
Resolution approving the Board of Education's acceptance of a DODIA MCAS grant. Resolve to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of a Department of Defense Education Activity DODIA Military Connected Academic Support Program MCAS Grant in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the project period from October first, 2023 through May thirty-first, 2028, and to refer the matter to the representative town meeting, RTM, per Rule six-point-five-point-three. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto USS Groton Sale Financial Request.
I'll read it. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Resolution to, you just need the resolve.
Sure, yeah, the title and the resolve.
Resolution to fund a portion of the USS Groton Sale Monument. Resolve that the Groton Town Council approves two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to be provided to the Groton Sale Foundation for use in funding the Groton Sale Monument to be paid using one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand in American Rescue Act funds, forty-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the Capital Improvement Project Fund, and forty-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the General Fund Contingency Fund, and to refer the matter to the representative town meeting, per Rule six-point-five-point-three.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Parker. Counsel Bordalon.
Just, you know, I'm, I'm in support of this. I think this is a great gateway for our community, and two, two, two blocks have already been purchased as the fundraiser, I have two more to go. I, you know, as I stated before, the rescue funds of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, as it was stated, that we could, if needed, if folks were in need, we could go into other funding. Is that correct, Town Manager Bird?
Yes.
And so I just hope that if those needs arise, with it being winter, homelessness, food insecurities, that we remember that one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand of the rescue funds went to this, which I'm in support of, but that we were told that we could access funds if needed on the other end from other accounts to support our community. So, but I think this is great. I look forward to seeing it go up, and I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for the town of Groton.
Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the bulky waste collection.
I can read that, Mayor.
Sure.
Recommend a resolution for a bulk waste collection pilot program. Resolve, resolve that the town council approves a pilot program to be administered by the Human Services Department for providing financial assistance to eligible residents for bulk waste collection.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Parker.
Do we need to, question, important, a question? Do we need to announce the amount of money we're putting for that program?
I don't think so, but if, if you want to be safe about it, we can do it.
Then.
Town Manager Bird, do we need to announce the amount of money that we're putting, because it's a pilot program?
Might want to add it, just to better safety and sorry that the RTM knows exactly. I mean, it's in the wherethes, but might as well add it.
You want me just to say it?
Do, yeah.
Read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Just do it.
Just do it.
Resolution for bulk waste collection pilot program. Whereas the town would like to start a pilot program to provide financial assistance to eligible residents for bulk waste collection, and whereas this program would be administered by the Human Services Department in cooperation with the town and city blight officers in public works, and whereas the Human Services Department shall determine financial eligibility of residents using a formula similar to the Perkins Fund, and whereas financial assistance will be limited to six-hundred dollars households slash year unless an increase is authorized by the town manager, and whereas funds were received through the sale of two pieces, pieces of property along the former knowing school property and allocated for the cleanup of nuisance properties, and whereas ten thousand dollars of those funds will be utilized for the pilot program, and whereas in certain cases, transportation day passes can be issued at no charge to eligible residents in lieu of an expenditure. Now, therefore be it resolved that the town council approves a pilot program to be administered by the Human Services Department for providing financial assistance to eligible residents for bulk waste collection.
I still second. I do.
Move by Jacome, seconded by Parker.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, please. This doesn't have to go to the RTM, Mr. Man, Manager?
It does, because it hits ten thousand.
And add.
So I'll add and refer this, this item to the RTM for consideration.
And I'm going to add further to his thing to say under six-point-five. We don't have to, it's ten thousand. It's ten thousand dollars, isn't it? Anything ten thousand has to go.
I know, but six-five-three is, I mean, they're, you know what six-five-three is? I don't know if they know what six-five-three is.
Well, it's the rule, it's the number in the RTM rules that gives the authority to the RTM to shorten, cut the process, so, but.
To vote on it.
So, you know, you can say expedited or you can say six-five.
Yeah, refer to the RTM per charter.
If it has to go there, it's going to go there, whether we say it or not.
Yeah, and then it's up to the, and, and, and the moderator is aware that there's a request to fast-track it, so.
Okay.
It's items that have to be voted on before the following one, so, so the October meeting, they'd be referred, and it would be voted on in November. If you have things that need to be voted on in October, that's six-five.
So my secondary question is, this is going to be expedited, correct?
Yeah, that's the request is to expedite it, yes, so you can vote next Wednesday.
There you go.
I'm good now, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the employee ARPA funds date extension.
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Resolution updating the active date of employment for Town of Groton Employee ARPA Payments. Resolve that the town council hereby approves an update to the active date of employment to December thirty-first, 2021, allowing additional employees to be eligible for the ARPA employment payments with a return of the remaining funds of twenty-four thousand to the general ARPA fund. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Bordalon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto Parks and Recreation Department Manager of Parks and Open Space. Okay.
Resolution replacing vacant Parks and Recreation position with a manager of Parks and Open Space position is creating the job description. Resolve that the town council hereby approves the refill of a Parks and Recreation vacancy with a full-time manager of Parks and Open Space position in the division, pay range of seventy-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-two dollars to ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, and we will create a job description.
Second.
Moved by Westervelt, seconded by Parker. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto Human Resources Job Descriptions.
I can read it, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Resolution approving new and updated Human Resources Job Descriptions. Resolve that the town council hereby approves the new job description for the Human Resource Journalist Position and updates the Human Resources Administrator, Employee Benefits, and Retirement Analyst, Analyst, and the Human Resource Associate Job Descriptions. So move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Franco. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Mr. Mayor, I can take the last one.
Okay, USWA Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Resolution approving the tentative agreement reached between the Town and United Steel Paper and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union Local nine-four-one-one AFL-CIO for the term July first, 2022 to June thirtieth, 2025. Whereas the Town of Groton and United Steel Paper and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union Local nine-four-one-one AFL-CIO reached a tentative agreement to, on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2025, and whereas the bargaining unit membership voted to approve the agreement, and whereas approval is recommended by the town's negotiators, therefore be it resolved, the Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement inclusive of Attachment D Pension Agreement between the Town and United Steel Paper and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union Local nine-four-one-one AFL-CIO on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2025. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalon. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Jacome, seconded by Bordalon. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. We adjourn unanimously at seven fifty-six.